Barely.
Turn my speaker off, too. Why are we trying to speaker off? Just mute yourself. I did mute.
Yeah.
It's still coming out. Is your phone on? Are you doing it through your phone? No.
It comes from the mic, my microphone on the laptop.
Yeah, where's that?
You have to go into settings.
Oh, you want to shut the speaker off.
Pull that one way down here.
Okay, does that work?
Testing, testing.
I don't want to get rid of that.
Just. Yeah.
Okay, so let me, well, let's keep everyone. Welcome to Manhattan Community Board Five Land Use Housing and Zoning Committees Public Hearing for Community Comment on the MSMX rezoning plan proposed by the Department of City Planning to address residential use and to add it to four manufacturing quadrants in Midtown Manhattan. I'm Nancy Gosho, Chair of the Committee. Julie Chu is our Vice Chair, and she's online tonight. And our committee members present tonight, please introduce yourselves, starting with those in the room.
I'm Zul Zalkowitz.
David Sigmund.
Alan Yu.
Michael Greeley.
And then those that are online that are committee members, please introduce yourselves.
Renal Vicar.
Julie Chu.
Janice Young.
Okay, so you can find the original presentation from the Department of City Planning, the presentation from the land use consultant George James, and the Department of City Planning's answers to our committees and the community's questions on our website under the calendar item for this meeting and under the Land Use Committee page under Resources. We want to thank the Department of City Planning for answering all of our questions. They numbered over 100. Wednesday, March 26, will be our next Land Use Housing and Zoning Committee meeting, when we will deliberate and vote on an MSMX draft resolution, and then we will present that draft resolution to the full board for our final vote on April 10. Please use the raised hand function now if you wish to comment on the MSMX rezoning plan. Please raise your hands. Everybody raise your hands now, so we know how many people. Sooner rather than later, please. Okay, so we will call on you in the order of hands raised. I just want to say, please speak succinctly, avoid repetition of a prior speaker with so many hands raised to comment, and to give everyone an opportunity to comment, please limit your comments to two minutes. We will ask you to wrap up when you reach two minutes. I will call on you when we are ready to hear you speak. You will be unmuted, and you may turn on your camera at that time. If you're using your phone, on your phone, you star nine to raise your hand and six to unmute.
I'm going ahead and promoted.
So, okay, so let's start with David Gordon, please.
Actually, sorry, I have already promoted Phil Levin to start.
Okay, so we've already promoted Phil Levin to start.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, Jake, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. So, hi, my name is Phil, and I've lived on the West Side for 10 years. I'm here tonight because my wife and I recently welcomed our second child. He's actually 10 weeks old, right outside here, and I've watched with heartbreak as over 80% of our friends with young children have been forced to leave the city, not because they don't love it here, but because of the skyrocketing, skyrocketing cost of housing and general lack of available housing has driven them away. That's why I'm strongly in favor of this plan. This proposal's greatest strength is its density. Maintaining an 18 FAR throughout the project is crucial because it allows us to build the maximum amount of housing, including income-restricted units. Only by embracing higher density can we make this neighborhood more affordable. The neighborhood already has the infrastructure, the transit, and vibrant character to support a thriving 24/7 neighborhood. The one missing piece is enough housing. So I urge you to fully support this plan without dilution, so we can build the housing our community desperately needs, enabling families like mine to stay and grow here. Thank you, and I hope the Community Board fully supports this initiative.
So you currently live in the district?
I live on the West, I live right above the district, Upper West Side, but you know.
You're not a resident of this district?
Not, not, not a, not a direct resident of the district, but I would love to be one day if there was more housing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you so much.
Is, um. David Gore, David Gordon. You can, oh, turn on your camera.
Yep, that's me.
Whether or not you live or work in the districts that we're talking about?
I live in Lower Manhattan, and I work on the, I work in the district.
Which, which quadrant do you work in? Curious.
I work on 36th and Eight, and Eighth Ave.
Okay, on the West Side Bay or East Side Bay?
On the West, yeah, on the West Side.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. Like I said, my name is David Gordon. I live in Lower Manhattan and work in the district and work in the area in which this would be, in the affected area. I just want to reiterate everything that Phil previously said. I agree with him that the absolute most important part of this project is building more housing. We are in an absolute housing crisis. My rent on the Lower, in Lower Manhattan, has gone up twice just in the last six months, and every new unit of housing in Lower Manhattan has the potential to reduce the cost of living for everyone here. I also just want to say that I know that this process, as we go through it from the Community Board to the Planning Commission, to the City Council, always requires compromise, and everyone wants to sort of get their thing in and wants to, you know, make this the perfect solution. But I really, really encourage everyone to not make perfect the enemy of the good here and make sure that we maximize the absolute number of units. Again, I reiterate what Phil said, the maximizing to the 18 FAR cap is critically important, and this could be an astounding number of units for Lower Manhattan, even more than the SoHo-NoHo rezoning. So, once again, I encourage the Community Board and this committee to support this rezoning in its entirety to its maximum density, and I encourage the City Council to then heed the Community Board's potential yes towards this. Thank you so much, and thank you for letting me testify.
Thank you. Next is. Who? Austin Celestin, Celestin? And the timer, our timer is on now, it's Austin, just a minute. Sorry, I'm.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Austin, are you speaking in favor or opposed to the zoning?
I am in favor of the rezoning.
Do you live in the district or work in the district?
I used to take classes in the district.
But you don't work in the district or live in the district now?
I do not currently work or live in the district.
Okay, thank you.
So my name is Austin Celestin. I am a graduate student at NYU Wagner studying urban planning. I used to have friends and family in the district. They have all moved out in the last few years. Two of them directly cited the cost of living. One, I believe that everyone should be able to have the opportunity to live in the city, and the best way to do that is to build more housing. It's not mincing words when this rezoning is possibly the single greatest opportunity we've had to build housing outside of city of yes. This is three times larger than SoHo, is larger than Gowanus. It's one of the largest rezonings we've seen recently, and it's going in a community that has built one of the lowest number of new affordable units. And I think the priority should absolutely be the maximization of total units, but especially affordable units, and we're taking advantage of new powers that the state granted us to allow for increased density. We basically have every transit line in this district, every available resource. Obviously, compromise is critical. You want to be able to make sure these projects go online, get to the depth of affordability that you want, but it's urgent that this Community Board understands that the needs of the neighborhood are important, but so are citywide needs, and the city needs a lot more housing. Everywhere needs a lot more housing. This is a great plan, and at the very least, this is something that should be passed. If you need to put conditions in it, put conditions in it, but get to yes on this, please, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Brian Weber. Brian, you can turn on your camera. So we're going to reset the timer? Or you have 14 seconds now? Hi, Brian.
Sorry, it takes a second to get brought over, so thank you, Nancy, and thank you, CB5. I just want to point out, I'm an actual resident of the Northwest. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a, I'm actually a resident in the Northwest quadrant of the proposed plan. The prior speakers who've come from the Upper West Side and Lower Manhattan, who have some affiliation with this neighborhood, are not community members, and this is the Community Board to speak on behalf of the community. So here's the thing. I'm in favor of releasing restrictions to allow for manufacturing to convert to residential, but I am not in favor of the destruction of the existing built environment to maximize the number of units. We should not be talking about maximization, and I caution my lobbyist friends who are talking in those respects. We should be talking about livability, because that is, at the end of the day, the most important thing to those of us who live and work and want to live in Manhattan is livability on the streets. When DCP first approached the community, the community all said, we'd love the idea of more neighbors and allowing the release of these restrictions on manufacturing to convert to residential, but we do not support the destruction of this neighborhood. And as currently written, this incentivizes demolition and new build. So what I would recommend this board do is propose a deny unless. And again, make it clear that we support the conversion of manufacturing and commercial spaces to residential, but we support the adaptive reuse and conversion and the maintaining of this built environment as opposed to acquisition, demolition, and building of towers. Thank you.
Thank you. So you are our support with conditions?
No, I'm a deny unless.
Right, unless, okay, thank you.
Deny unless, thank you.
Our next speaker is Rachel Schultz.
A minute, she needs a minute, just a minute. Hold on, sorry, it took me a little bit. I, like Brian, do live in the, in the area. I'm in the southeast quadrant. I do support the general idea of residential development and conversion. However, the written material supporting proposals fails to examine how the proposed zoning would affect actual site. And as you suggested, Nancy, from last week, I did look at the George Jane Study, which was presented to the Community Board, and it looks at the development potential of three actual sites, one of which, Site Two, is in the southeast quadrant on 25th Street, right behind where I live. The worst-case site for Site Two would allow a tower of more than 1,300 feet, equal to roughly 130 stories and exceeding the height of the Empire State Building without the spire. Let me repeat that. This proposal would allow a building taller than the Empire State Building in a neighborhood where the tallest existing building within the southeast quadrant is 475 feet. In addition, the worst case at the other two sites are 1,576 feet at Site One and 872 feet at Site Three. Such buildings would negatively impact my building and the neighboring buildings, including the Church of St. Sava, reducing air and light and creating darkness in south-facing apartments, making them virtually uninhabitable and completely changing the character of the neighborhood. We would ask that the committee reduce the FAR limits to 12 within the southeast quadrants and in any other areas where that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Blair is next. Barbara, do you work or live in the area, one of the four quads, and do you support or oppose this rezoning? Barbara, you should be able to unmute yourself. Yeah, she's, she's not, no.
I am sorry. Okay, there I am. I'm so sorry about that. I'm Barbara Blair. I am the president of the Garment District Alliance, which is the Northwest Quadrant, and I work in the district and have for many years. The Garment District Alliance supports the Department of City Planning's MSMX proposal that would allow manufacturing buildings to convert to residential uses, including live-work spaces. COVID had an outsized impact on the Garment District, and in the aftermath, many of our buildings remain at 25% to 30% vacancy. The work model that evolved out of the pandemic, including working from home and part-time return-to-office practices, coupled with the devastation that was wrought in the district, a result of the city's placement of individuals with severe mental illness, emotional illness, and addiction illnesses in hotels in the districts, and the crime and social disorder on our streets that lingered has resulted in a neighborhood that is stressed on all fronts. We view the MSMX plan as an opportunity to build a new residential stakeholder group, to occupy space in the buildings, create, create a 24/7 mixed-use neighborhood, support ground-floor retail while also responding to a severe need for additional housing in our city. The mixed-use model that is used throughout the nation and in our city and other areas is one that's proven to be compelling for all users, retailers, residents, and businesses. We believe that allowing mixed use in the Garment District is an important step towards reactivating and revitalizing and optimizing our transit-rich strategic central business location. We applaud the efforts of City Planning to address the critical need for housing in the city while providing an important opportunity to make the neighborhood safer and more economically diverse and feasible as a part of Midtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is William Schultz.
Hi, everybody.
For a resident or work in the district, and do you support or oppose this rezoning?
I am a resident of the southeast quadrant, and I work from my home office, so same. And I support with conditions, I guess is the right phrasing. So I live in the southeast quadrant, and as you know, the southeast quadrant includes several pockets designated as historic districts, but the rezoning proposal, as I understand it, treats all four quadrants equally. In addition, it allows for assemblages and transfers of floor area at development sites. What this means is the potential for enormous buildings, as you've already heard, built among the small existing historic buildings, and that makes it nearly impossible to assess the environmental impact properly. We recommend the zoning proposal should reflect the potential for assemblages and transfers of floor areas at soft sites, which will result in larger buildings negatively impacting our building during their construction phase and blocking out a great deal of air and light from the southern-facing apartments. So the proposed FAR limits, we would propose, should be reduced to 12 or lower to reflect the very real possibility of floor area transfers from nearby sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Caffaro, you can unmute yourself and turn on your camera, and would you tell us, do you live or work in the district? One of the quadrants, and are you supporting or opposing this rezoning, please?
Hello. Hi, I'm Renee Caffaro. I live in Community Board Five, as actually a member for 11 years, and on the executive committee. I work in the Garment District, so I'll be in the Northwest quadrant. I am a deny unless of this proposed plan. A lot of you have spoken on behalf of residents, though I am a resident of the area. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and all the many other workers in the Garment District that are not only just fashion workers, but studios and rehearsal studios, lawyers, a lot of other small businesses that we work with in that area. And what I've seen so far, I've been active in a lot of these over the course of the last year, I have not found any real assurances that, once it transfers over into residential, that it would be affordable residential. You know, I would really love a number of what it would be and how many of these units would be affordable, because I agree that we absolutely need to fix the affordability issue and the affordable housing issue in this city. I do not believe that, as it stands right now, that it is going to be able to do all of that. I also share some of the previous concerns about FAR. I would love to see something that's limiting the FAR, but really what I'm asking for is for people to realize that the Garment District is not dead. I'm happy to take anyone who would like to around and shadow me for a day. I have a fashion business. Everything is made and sourced in the Garment District by manufacturers next door at 307 West 38th Street. On between Seventh and Eighth Avenues, I have all of my fabrics, some of my other sewing rooms, photographers, you name it. It's all in that area, and we can't just simply move. We have to work together, so many of us are also, need to be close to the Garment Theater District for us to work. So displacing us would mean killing all these small businesses. So I would love for the Community Board to really think about how they can go back and deny this unless they come back with a plan for affordable live-work spaces for these freelancers, which could be a really wonderful boon to the city, and also what kind of assurances we can give to all of these small business owners that we will not all just be out of a job. Thank you so much, and I want to thank all of Community Board Five for being here. I know how hard it is to be working this hard as a volunteer, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Cohen, and Dan, who you can unmute and turn on your camera.
Hi. Let's see, can you hear me? Um. Okay, I can't hear, hear you, but I'm going to proceed as if, I'm going to assume you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, now I can hear you. Okay, I'm not a resident, but I travel to the district for work. I support this rezoning because I would love to live in the district, as it would shorten my commute, but unfortunately, the high rents are a barrier. These high rents are caused by a severe housing shortage, and building more housing would allow more people to live here and reduce rents. Many people, including myself, would love to live here, but unfortunately, the housing shortage prevents that. I ask that the Community Board please welcome more neighbors by supporting the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Hyatt. Andrew, again, tell us if you live or work in one of the four quadrants, and do you support or oppose this rezoning? You may unmute and turn on your camera.
Yes, hello. Hi, I'm Andrew Hyatt. I, I live in CB5, but do not live or work in the exact district being rezoned. So I would like to start off a saying that I agree with everyone who says, like, we really need to increase the housing. There's a good proposal, and I really encourage the board to maximize the number of units. It's really important. If you've seen what Austin is doing, they're really showing how to reduce rental prices. So, but I kind of want to concentrate on something else, which is that I looked at the numbers, and for New York, for open space, you want, you know, to be well, as area to be well- served in open space, you want 2.5 acres per 1,000 people. That's means for, I think this is going to bring in, let's say, 20,000 new residents. That'll be 50 new acres. Okay, that's a, that's a lot, 50 new acres. I don't see how that could possibly happen. And CB5, of course, and all the people here know how lacking in, in public space and park space and trees this area is. And this is why I want to point out that Broadway is there. It runs throughout this exact space. It has, it is possible to remove cars from Broadway and turn this into a public space. We've looked at the numbers, our group, part of Broadway Linear Park, we've measured the amount of car traffic, and even at peak times, it's about, at the busiest intersections, 80 cars an hour. It's not a great thoroughfare for cars. There's a lot of problems even using Broadway for cars. The traffic engineers don't like it. No one, no one really likes it, but it could be used for the community, and there's not a lot of great other options. As we heard last week, it's unlikely that new public space is going to be brought in. Sorry, it's two weeks ago. But I'd like to point out, there's two things that we should, you should immediately consider. Tony Simone has an assembly member, Tony Simone has a presentation Monday about this, 35th to 36th. CB5 should be strongly considering this. It's, it's a necessary thing. And for the DOT Plaza between 38th and 39th, they, they're rebuilding the plaza, but with cars in it, that's, that's a change. So, thank you. I would like to thank my producer and mother and.
Our next speaker is Nat B. You can unmute and turn on your camera. Do you live or work in one of the four quadrants, and do you support or oppose this rezoning, please?
Hi, I live in Hell's Kitchen, and I do not work in the area, and I am in support of the proposal. So having affordable housing depends on having sufficient supply of housing. So doing things that allow you to provide more housing are essential, of course, to housing affordability. So relaxing the zoning in the area and maintaining a high FAR are essential to this. Second, I'm in favor in general of relaxing the zoning specifically because it makes the neighborhood more resilient to changes in the economy. So there was a big shift during COVID away from office work, so it ended up with a lot of vacancies. It would have been much more productive and made the neighborhood more vibrant if there was more flexibility in what you could do with those empty spaces. So just having more flexibility to respond to changes is really important. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Joe Rose. Joe, you can unmute and turn on your camera. Do you work or live in one of the four quadrants, and do you support or oppose this rezoning? We can't hear you, you're muted. Joe.
There you go. Now, all right. Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Joe Rose. My family lives and works. I have lived and worked in the district for, in the southeast quadrant for many decades, former Community Board Chair, former Chair of the City Planning Commission, currently head of the working group of the Flatiron Nomad Business Improvement District on this MSMX plan. I want to thank you all for your time and effort on this. We're working on it in terms of, we don't, speaking on behalf of the bid, we are still very much in the weeds. I want to say something to all the peoples, the open New York and the people advocating for more housing. I think we agree, and I celebrate, as someone who's done more residential rezonings than anybody else probably in history, I, I celebrate and would have welcomed the voices that you bring to the table. But the, the argument about no compromise support as is, the plan is, is, is perfect. It's not perfect. It's, it was rushed. This plan changed a lot between when it was originally formulated and what was done subsequent in response to the approval of the city of yes and the change of the multiple dwelling law. There are four separate areas of this proposal, each of which are, in fact, very different. And this isn't about the FAR to be allowed to be developed as housing. There is, in the southeast quadrant, more than enough existing FAR because of the large number of historic buildings and the two large historic districts. There is more than enough FAR to achieve every single unit of housing called for in the city planning draft proposal. Every, there's enough for every single unit, if you use the landmark air rights, which are much more flexible now as a result of the approval of the city of yes. This can be done. We're going to submit in our written testimony to the board. We were doing the math now, and we'll show and demonstrate this. I think it's a very important point. And the other thing is to accommodate this amount of FAR. It's not just FAR when you build housing. It's also the built form, light and air, access, how you do it, and how it relates to the street and to the quality of life. These are very, it's getting into the weeds, saying that no compromises, no, the, the role of the Community Board, the role of this whole process is to. uh the the role of the community board, the role of this whole process is to listen and improve and build upon and make better uh initial proposals. And there is a lot of room to do that in the context of this application. We will be uh from the from the bid, we'll be submitting. Another point that I just wanna close by pointing out, not in the southeast quadrant, which uh as I said, has enough FAR. There's a sliver just on Fortieth Street, on the north side of Fortieth Street and the far west side that has the ability to take air rights from uh the landmark theaters, the listed theaters, and those air rights should be utilized for that site. It shouldn't uh be uh be upzoned on that one sliver. It should take advantage of the uh the theater air rights that was uh created. So thank you and we will be submitting a a detailed uh uh analysis and I urge you, especially the open New York people, to look at this carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Rose. Uh, you can unmute and turn on your camera. Do you work or live in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this rezoning?
Hi, give me one second. Hi. Give me. Thank you. Um, I lived in this in southeast quadrant for over thirty years and I work from home, so I live and work here. Um, and I the point I'd like to make is that much of Manhattan and portions of the southeast quadrant are characterized by an avenue mid-block FAR differential with lower FARs in the mid-block and higher FARs on avenues and wide streets. That's because avenues and wide streets provide more light and air, can accommodate more pedestrian and vehicular traffic, and are better served by mass transit, while the mid-blocks are typically on narrow streets that cannot support the same density. Portions of the southeast quadrant are particularly appropriate for an avenue mid-block differential. We therefore strongly recommend that the board take into account and prioritize higher FARs on the avenues and two-way streets and lower FARs in mid-blocks on narrow one-way streets, especially those around historic sites such as in the southeast quadrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Wright. If you could unmute and turn on your camera and tell us if you live or work in one of the four quadrants and do you support or oppose this rezoning? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Wright, an architect and longtime resident of Manhattan CB five. I support the goals and the concept of the MSMX. Uh, however, I believe as it's um currently proposed in detail that it's unclear how and whether all these goals will be achieved with the rezoning. I'm not sure how you would characterize that in in the categories you set up. Um, first, I want to express my strong support for the city's efforts to increase the quantity and affordability of its housing stock. I support most of the provisions of the citywide city of yes for housing opportunities zoning amendments, including the responsibility of every neighborhood to accommodate growth of the city's housing supply. Second, I support the broad MSMX planning goals that DCP identified based on public input, namely create vibrant mixed-use communities, support critical economic activity, and enhance neighborhood character. However, it is unclear how and whether all of these goals will be achieved with the proposed MS MX rezoning. DCP described MS MX as a neighborhood plan. It will be more accurate to call it a technical zoning map change with related zoning text amendments limited by the boundaries of each of the four existing manufacturing districts rather than the product of a community-based planning process resulting in updated neighborhood plans incorporating new house housing opportunities for these areas. This limited strategy blurs the distinctions between northwest, northeast quadrants, which are more like the adjacent midtown south blocks around it, but very different from the southwest, southeast quadrants, which are more like the adjacent Chelsea and Flatiron blocks. These distinctions can be seen in the land use density and bulk studies that DCP prepared for the DEIS. This mass mismatch of existing densities illustrates a primary weakness of the proposed MS MX rezoning since it would allow dramatic higher densities on mid-block lots with these within these quadrants without adjusting the lower density currently allowed along Sixth Street, Sixth Street, Sixth Avenue corridor between the quadrants. My recommendations are recognizing the coherent ne- neighborhood character and development potential of southwest and southeast quadrants. These areas should be combined into a single MS MX quadrant that includes the Sixth Avenue corridor. Let's call this area Chelsea North. As a starting point, I would suggest applying the highest density along the Sixth Avenue corridor with somewhat lower density at the mid-block lots between twenty ninth to thirty first streets and a possible step down in density at mid-block lots from twenty third to twenty ninth street. Um, in addition to control grossly out of scale development at mid-block sites that has occurred um in CB five, zoning tools should be considered to cons- counter the possibility of excessive concentration of FAR from merged zoning lots resulting in super tall buildings.
Are you wrapping up?
And I have uh further comments in my written statement, which I'll be submitting to uh Community Board Five, and I thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sally Sabri. I hope I nicked uh pronounced your name correctly. Do you live or work in one of the four quadrants and do you support or oppose this rezoning? You can unmute and turn on your camera. We can see you.
Great. Uh, my name is Sol Sabri. I'm the president of the West Thirty Street Block Association. My wife and I have been residents of Chelsea and CB five district for over twenty years. My wife works in the rezoning area as well. I am in favor of the rezoning plan. Throughout our time in this district, we've seen rents skyrocket across the city and many, many proposals to do something to reduce rents, but nothing has come to fruition. I think that the thing that's true about any rule or law that might be put in place to address this issue is that it'll never be perfect. But this is a vetted attempt to try to alleviate some of the housing issues that are striking everywhere in our city. Anyone who is opposed to this because it's not perfect will never be satisfied. We should do everything that incrementally allows for us movement towards housing. Every example of cities who have reduced the barriers to building housing in any form have resulted in decreased housing cross across the board. For this reason, you should absolutely consider the opinions of people outside the zone as well because it does impact them. People who are opposed to large buildings being built in their neighborhood should have considered that when they decided to live in one of the largest cities on earth. I'm sorry that you'll have some shade in your neighborhood and worse views, but you'll be helping move people out of poverty and add diversity to the fabric of these neighborhoods so that it's not just millionaires who can afford to live in Manhattan. A very unscientific examination of the people against the plan are people who are overwhelmingly over the age of forty five and people who are for it overwhelmingly a younger demographic. The naysayers are falling all over themselves to try to come up with a way of saying they are they are for housing but aren't for this progressive plan. To me, it seems like there's people who are closing the door to housing behind them after they've achieved it for themselves. On behalf of the West Thirty Street Block Association, I would like to voice our support in favor of the Midtown South Three Street Project and would like for CB five to support this rezoning at its maximum density because the city needs as much housing as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Alonso. Um, you can unmute and turn on your camera. Do you work or live in one of the four quadrants and do you support or oppose this rezoning? He's not going to. Melissa, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Melissa, you can go ahead and speak.
Yes, we can come back there.
All right. On to the next. Okay, uh Melissa, well, maybe we'll try to come back to you. Um, Eddie Siegel is the next uh speaker. Uh, you can unmute and turn your camera on. Can you work or live in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this rezoning, please?
Hi, everyone. Uh, yeah, so my name is Eddie. I work in an office that directly abuts the southwest uh quadrant. Um, I'm here to express my strong support of the plan, which I believe is essential to the future of this neighborhood. Uh, as I think we all know, the nature of work is changing. Many New Yorkers, including myself, now work remotely part of the week. I go in three to four days depending on what's going on that week. Uh, commercial office space is becoming more underutilized. Uh, my last employer a block away actually in the rezoning area uh downsides its pre-COVID lease by about half with the same number of employees. Um, at the same time, we're facing a pretty acute housing crisis, rents as high as it's ever been. Uh, and transforming these underutilized manufacturing, commercial buildings into residential units, including a significant portion of affordable housing, gives us a win-win solution. Uh, we get more homes, we get new neighbors, and it addresses this changing landscape that we find ourselves in uh after the pandemic. Um, bringing more homes and more neighbors in Midtown South will also make the area more vibrant. Whenever I work late after work, it is a noticeably deader area than the areas outside of it. There's just less residential there. Less people out there doing errands, getting dinner, saying hello to friends. And so bringing more people there who can actually utilize the small businesses, it's gonna create uh a much better environment for both those new neighbors who actually have a place to live and the existing residents who can have much higher quality public services that can serve not just uh the local commuting population. So I'm excited to welcome the new neighbors to my office. I hope some of my future uh colleagues might be able to actually walk to work from a few blocks away. Uh, and I hope you all give strong support to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is DJ Foxen. You can uh unmute yourself, turn on your camera. Tell us if you live or work in one of the four quadrants and do you support or oppose this rezoning?
Hi, sorry about that. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm DJ Falkson. I do not live or work uh in the CB. Uh, I live in Uptown Manhattan. I am there all the time. Uh, I have some friends who live in the area. Uh, I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned about the affordability crisis in New York. You know, like many others, I worry about the high cost of housing forcing many New Yorkers out of the city, so I strongly support the mixed-use plan. Um, one thing I haven't really heard yet, I wanna comment on, you know, I think one area that tends to benefit significantly from the plan is Koreatown, which is located near the Empire State Building, kind of right in the middle of the four plots from the rezoning. Uh, K-Town has grown rapidly over the past few decades, becoming one of the largest and most dynamic ethnic Korean cultural hubs in the world. Uh, it has its early roots in the nineteen seventies and eighties, um but it's grown to its current position as a thriving center for commerce, for culture and community. Uh, K-Town represents the best of what NYC can be, which is diverse, dynamic, and inclusive. I think many in New York have found themselves in opposition to the way the Trump administration has fueled anti-immigrant sentiments and stoked fears around immigration, but K-Town tells a really different story, which is one of immigrants finding a place in the heart of NYC and transforming it into a vibrant, welcoming neighborhood that draws people from all walks of life. I think the growth of K-Town is a testament to the power of immigration and diversity, and I think the rezoning would really support that area's growth. Um, so the plan's really great. I think allowing increased residential density and mixed-use development um will allow for more housing options for people who wanna live in this bustling neighborhood, uh which includes immigrants uh who helped make K-Town what it is today. Uh, more housing does mean more residents, but that means more support for businesses, restaurants, and cultural institutions that really make K-Town unique. And I think the streetscape improvements included in the plan uh will be able to make it uh the area even more welcoming. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I hope the CB will support this initiative.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Deutsch. And Sam, do you work or live in one of the four quads and do you support or oppose this zoning? You can unmute and turn on your camera, please.
Hello, can you see or hear me?
We can't see and hear you.
Great. I I'm calling because I live in London, Paris, which is just, I believe, two or three blocks from from CB five. Um, and I accordingly am in CB five all the time, given how close it is. And I'm calling to strongly support um the proposed rezoning. Um, I think a lot of good points have been made about the importance of housing and um the economic vitality that it will bring. But one point that I just wanna make quickly is my job. I work extensively on climate and climate modeling and building more housing here in Midtown Manhattan is exactly where we need to be building housing and especially um in a world where the federal government is taking a step back on climate. We need um our cities to work more than ever to lower our emissions and to um tackle the climate crisis. And there is truly no better place in the country to build housing than right here on top of over a dozen subway lines. Um, so I I I'm a big supporter and ironically, the biggest impact on myself might be that it might change my view from my apartment. But I firmly recognize that, you know, New York is a changing city and embracing that change and also recognizing that the climate impacts at the end of the day are what are the most impactful down the road and thinking about future generations, what we should be prioritizing. So I strongly support um this this upzoning and I hope that it passes in a way such that it maximizes to the extent possible how many homes can be built in Midtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aaron Secree. Hope I spelled that uh pronounced that correctly. Um, Aaron, you can unmute and turn on your camera and can to tell us if you live or work in uh one of the four quadrants and do you support or oppose this rezoning?
Hi, you pronounced it perfectly well. Thank you so much for putting together this forum. I do not live there, but I worked there for the last three. I have been working there for the last three years. Uh, I first wanted to thank you for the time and effort you're putting into this process and hearing such a diversity of voices. Um, I strongly support the Midtown South rezoning because uh I just believe that we need more housing in the city, including affordable units to lower rent citywide. Uh, I've just, you know, had a baby. We wanna be in the city for as long as possible. We want our you know, friends to sort of stay in the city as long as possible. I think a big part of that is housing affordability. Uh, I think the current zoning policy is a a vestige of a different era. Uh, and it was crafted decades ago uh at a very different time for the sort of area. And I think everyone recognizes that our city needs have dramatically changed in this time. Uh, I've commuted to this area every, you know, weekday for the last three years. Uh, I'm three stops away on the two, three, and I just love how connected to the rest of New York it is. Um, I think there's no better place to build this type of uh housing than this particular district. And overall, I don't wanna take too up too much time. I think this is an opportunity to transform the neighborhood into the area into a a more active, affordable, accessible neighborhood for all New Yorkers. And I live right behind, as you can see, an eighty-story building and a seventy-story building. Uh, I think that's one of the beauties of New York and and one of the things that makes it most vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Albin Henenberger. And uh you can unmute and turn on your camera. And would you tell us, do you live or work in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this rezoning, please?
Okay, uh, can you hear it?
Yes, we can, and we can see you too.
Cool, awesome. Uh, I uh I don't live there, but I do work on thirtieth between seventh and eighth. I'm not the best at math, so I don't know which uh district or quadrant that is, but I'll leave it to you. Um, I just wanna quickly talk about two things. I I am in support of the plan. Um, and I thought I heard someone talking about like they weren't sure how many affordable units or housing is to be built. According to the plan, it's about two thousand nine hundred units, which is would be going a long way to um helping lower rents, keeping people where they wanna live uh in a transit-dense area like Midtown South. Um, and also not, I wanna just bring up a different point, which is if we look at the scope of federal politics right now, New York is on schedule to lose, I think, two to three electoral votes in the next um census in twenty thirty. Um, so with that context, I think it's super important to bring as many units as we reasonably can um into the city in general and to everywhere and including this rezoning. Um, if we wanna stay relevant at the uh at federal level as well. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Hoyer. You can unmute and turn on your camera. And would you tell us if you live or work in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this rezoning?
Hello, hey, everybody. Thank you for the time and letting me provide comments. Uh, so I'm Alex Hoyer. I don't live in the district nor work in the district. I live in the So I'm Alex Hoyer. I don't live in the district, nor work in the district. I live in the East Village. And I'm strongly in support of the plan. And so ultimately, I think it's really important that we build housing everywhere in the city. We unfortunately don't have time to waste. We are in a housing emergency. I think we are hearing it from mayoral candidates. It's kind of top of mind for everyone. I just really think this is an awesome opportunity to be increasing the housing supply and increasing housing affordability in the city. And so I think initially, like, when I was thinking about the area in Midtown South, I think it was, you know, an area that I previously would have associated as somewhere where people more so work and maybe less so live. But recently, my cousin lives near Herald Square, and I was pleasantly surprised by the area and that there was a lot going on, and it was vibrant. And so I just, like, generally agree with what folks have said earlier that I think by, you know, increasing the housing supply, like, further kind of increase and attract businesses to come to the area and continue to make it a place that is a kind of really vibrant and like a awesome area to hang out. And then also, I think, yeah, from a, like, convenience perspective, the transportation options are one of a kind. So I think it's just like a really, really, like, great opportunity for us to be providing with more people to be living in an area that is so transit-rich and so easy to get around the city. And so I think, with that said, though, it's like I'm kind of evaluating where I'd want to live in the city. As I, I am worried about affordability, and I know that increasing supply in this area is a way to make it more affordable. And so I think that's why it's really, really important that we kind of increase the density and maximize the number of units as a part of this plan. And ultimately, yeah, just really excited, and I thank you all for the time to provide comments today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Miller. Daniel, you can unmute and turn on your camera. Do you work or live in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this rezoning, please?
Hi, my name is Dan Miller. I am a former resident of the Northeast Quadrant. And I was priced out because when I first moved here, I moved in, moved to New York, and I moved to CB5. And I could afford to live there because I was living with a partner. A couple of years later, we broke up, and I couldn't afford it anymore. So I had to move out to Brooklyn, and now I'm currently living in Queens. Because these are the kind of stories that get lost when you start looking about, talking about livability and making sure that the mid-block region is protected from excessive FAR. We have to ask, affordable for who? I would personally love to live in CB5 again, but I can't because there just isn't enough housing. We haven't built enough housing. And so to, to... There are compromises that you can make around, you know, design, around setback rules. But the overarching goal has to be maximizing the number of units that get produced and building as much FAR as we need to maximize the amount of housing that we can get out of this incredibly vital rezoning. I'm just a huge supporter of this plan and, you know, compromise and do what you can and work to get the plan right, absolutely. But at the end of the day, we need to get it done because this city doesn't have enough housing. And when we're given an opportunity to rezone, to build more, we have to make the most of that opportunity. And I think CB5 has the chance to do that, and I really hope that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Nielsen. Eric, you can unmute and turn on your camera and tell us if you work or live in one of the four quadrants and do you support or oppose this rezoning, please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Eric Nielsen, and I work in CB5. I've worked in CB5 for a number of years, although I don't, although not in the particular parts of Midtown South as impacted by this. I'm generally, I'm calling as someone that's generally concerned about affordability of housing in New York City. And I'm excited by the prospect of building more housing everywhere across the city, including in Midtown South, particularly because it's already so well-connected by mass transit. Frequently, when proposals like this are discussed, people, a lot of things come up about the capacity of the neighborhood to support new housing, and at least in terms of transit, this neighborhood is set really well, set up really well for accepting an inflow of new residents. I appreciate that the, that this plan would allow for easier conversion of office districts, office buildings, which are currently, many of which are underutilized or vacant. And doing so would breathe new life into these areas that have been impacted by the by the troubles in the office market and generally just contribute to a more thriving part, thriving part of New York City. So thank you for your time, and I urge you to please support, to please support this plan without any modifications. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Allison Deans. You can unmute and turn on your camera. And would you tell us if you live or work in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this rezoning?
Hello. Yes, I live in the Southeast Quadrant. I live in the Southeast Quadrant, and I conditionally support increasing housing. I do think we need more housing. I think we need more affordable housing. But some of the proposals at their extreme would severely restrict air and light in the Southeast Quadrant. So I agree with some of what my fellow residents suggested, which is lower FAR mid-block and higher FAR on the avenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cecilia Farret. You can unmute and turn on your camera and tell us if you work or live in one of the four quadrants and do you support or oppose this rezoning, please?
Okay. Hi, my name is Cecilia Faro. I live a block and a half from the Southeast Quadrant, and my daughter works on the Southwest Quadrant in question. I'm speaking in behalf of the 29th Street Association. We are in favor and very supportive of the conversion of commercial and factory space into residential spaces, which can definitely make the area more alive, but we're very concerned of the conversion plan that has been presented. So we're asking the board to deny support of the plan because, in our opinion, the formulated plan would not help the community or resolve the housing problems in Manhattan. There are just too many loopholes and opportunities that only benefit the developers in this plan, and that will come to the detriment of the community. This plan is promoting demolition instead of reuse and convert. Creating affordable housing is not at the heart of the plan. Instead, the plan fosters the proliferation of super-tall buildings at the economic benefit of developers with no real promise of the housing actually being affordable. We thank you for the opportunity of expressing our point of view. And on behalf of the 29th Street Association and its 1,138 members, we urge you not to support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. I mispronounced your name. Please forgive me.
That's okay.
Okay, so our next speaker is Marion Fisher. You can unmute and turn on your camera, Marion. And do you live or work in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this plan?
Okay. I live in CB4, right on 23rd Street. I'm commenting from the perspective as a disability advocate and hoping to get more elevators on 23rd Street, which is a possibility. Is along the district. I'm the one who worked on the rally with Jesse Greenwald to get elevators on 23rd Street. We got one. We're pushing for 8th Avenue and 6th Avenue. Hopefully, they'll be zoning for accessibility with the developers possibly contributing. And also, the MTA is examining population growth along 8th Avenue, and this might be a possibility to have a more accessible 23rd Street. I'm speaking independently, but I am a member of Elevator Action Group and worked extensively on widening accessibility throughout the city on elevators in the subway. And this is a possibility for greater accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. We, there are no more hands raised. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, we have Leo Gutman. Please unmute and turn on your camera. Do you live or work in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this rezoning, please?
Oh, thanks for the opportunity to speak, Leo Gutman. I do not live in the four quadrants, and I'm looking at the map. Sorry, it looks like the office I have access to is just outside of one of the quadrants, like, less than a block out, but not quite in the quadrants. Nevertheless, I'm seeking in favor of the Midtown South mixed-use plan. Like, to echo what a lot of the other speakers have said so far, I think this is, you know, a chance to make an already vibrant neighborhood even more dynamic by adding the housing that New Yorkers badly need right now. Thousands of units that are both mixed rate, market rate and affordable are going to help, you know, with, you know, rent soaring throughout the city. This area is like extremely well-served by transit, extremely well-served by, in terms of proximity to the jobs and things to do. It has parks nearby. It has really everything a neighborhood could want. And it's the kind of place that if we did build more residential units, it's the kind of place I would be looking at potentially, you know, in future move. And, yeah, I would say, just like, considering that, you know, the impacts that this plan could have on, you know, climate, accessibility, having people live near transit. You know, there are tons of reasons to support this. I think it's one of the best neighborhoods we can be doing this for. And I really hope that the board will end up supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Daven. You can unmute and turn on your camera. And would you tell us, please, if you live or work in one of the four quadrants? And do you support or oppose this rezoning, please? Michael, you should be able to unmute.
Oh, sorry about that. Can you hear me? Okay, so I live in the southwest, right on the edge of the southwest quadrant. And while I support converting existing facilities to housing, I'm really concerned about, you know, bulldozing the neighborhood and turning it into a suburban development of super-tall, glass, soulless buildings. We all want to live in Manhattan. We all love it here. We all want affordable housing. But do we want to change the character of these neighborhoods so much just to warehouse people here? So I think that, you know, the development needs to be concerned with the nature of what we are losing and what we are gaining. There's plenty of empty, underutilized commercial space here. And I know the developers are going to want to just raise everything and change the nature of the neighborhood. We like the neighborhood, and I think the neighborhood is part of the reason why it's attractive. So it's delicate. It's very delicate. But there's plenty of room for housing in existing facilities and delicate use of reconstruction. And that's all I have. So good luck, guys.
Thank you. We have no other speakers. Ray, who have raised their hand?
And anybody want to speak again?
Is there anybody in attendance that would like an opportunity to speak? If he would, please, great for him.
Renee, anyone speak again?
Okay, Renee, go ahead.
Hey, real quick, I wanted to thank whoever did give a number for the affordable units. That's helpful, however, that is still a very small percentage of what is proposed to be built. So I want to thank all of the people who actually do live and work in the area for speaking about this. And for all of those who don't live and work in the area but want to, you know, I caution everyone to also think about, you know, what the public give backs would be. And when I was on CB5 as part of the Education Committee, one of the things we always used to talk about is if you do build a lot of residential units, you have to also make sure that we're building schools and infrastructure upgrades. So there's still just a lot more to it. You know, it's not just if you build it, they will come. So I want to thank you guys again. I just wanted to say that, yes, that is a great number. That sounds really good in a vacuum, but we still don't know what affordable is, if that's just slightly below market or if it's truly affordable. And we could do a lot, lot better than that. Mih would provide for up to 30% affordable. I wish it could even be more than that because we have plenty of Hudson Yards and, you know, super-tall towers in the district already. So thank you very much, and good luck with all of your debates tonight.
Thank you, Renee. Anyone else wish to speak? We are taking a look. Joe Rose would like to speak again. Go ahead, Joe. I'm mute. We know you live and work in the Southeast Quadrant.
So I just, again, thank you and very briefly want to say, and there's a great deal of consensus here. And I know that there's an approach, which is just, you know, push hard and push hard and say maximum FAR. I just want to encourage people to treat others with sensitivity and respect and listen to the, to those parts of the arguments that have merit. Don't, don't characterize, we shouldn't be characterizing each other in these negative ways when the goal is to figure out how to bring housing and build on the successes, create more housing, and do so in a way that builds on the sense of community. So I know people get passionate. I know there's different approaches that people take to these kind of things. But again, thank you to the community board for what you do to weigh and think hard about this stuff. But just, and I encourage everybody, including people who may, you know, take different perspective. It's not whether you're old or young or in or out. It's all, we're trying to get the best possible outcome here. And generosity of spirit is really important. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else?
grace.org and people decide someone may join up to 7:30.
Always a reminder with the written comments to the board also.
Yeah, let's, we'd like to remind you that we'd love to get your written comments. You send them to the board office by email. The email is The written comments really mean a lot. The verbal is important, but the written is really quite helpful. So this is our public hearing. We won't have discussion, as I said, tonight. We will We will deliberate at our next committee meeting on the 26th of March. And then that's when various board members and committee members will express their comments on this plan. What we wanted to do was to hear what the public had to say. Let it marinate in our heads so we could sleep on it, think about it. And I've come back with consensus resolution that somehow includes everyone that's spoken and expressed a comment. Yeah, and the full board vote, as I've mentioned previously, will be on April 10. And both of those meetings, our next land-use housing and zoning committee meeting will be on Zoom. You can sign up through our website. And also you can sign up through Zoom for our full board meeting on April 10. Okay, thank you, everyone. I think this was very informative for all of us working on this proposal. And we appreciate your input and we hope to come to a consensus that represents the entire community. Thank you all.